Okay, we can open the meeting. To announce that the meeting is being taken by Area 58. First thing is the pledge of allegiance. For the nations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Next is approval of the agenda. Any comments or changes to the agenda? Nope. All right. Selectors' minutes. I can move the regular session of August ninth, 2022, and the regular session of March eighth, 2023. Second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Mr. Pope, you want to handle it?
The warrants?
To approve the following warrants. Commitment, vendor warrant of eighty-seven for two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars and ninety-one cents. Ambulance commitments for March sixth, 2023, to March twelfth, 2023, for forty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and twenty cents. Ambulance commitment for March thirteenth, 2023, to March nineteenth, 2023, for twenty thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Move to approve the following warrants. Payroll warrant number eighty-eight for four-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and seventy cents. Vendor warrant number eighty-nine for fifty-five thousand, ninety-one dollars and twenty-six cents. Withholding warrants, number ninety, for one-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Billings?
Move to approve the payments of the following second bills. Insurance, hundred dollars for CNA Soretti Direct bill. CNA Soretti Direct bill for six-hundred insurance. Diamond Mechanical for four-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. And County of Plymouth Cooperative Extension Service for a hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving right along. We can go into some of our discussions. You want to talk about fireworks contract?
Sure. So this was brought up at the previous meeting. This is for the fireworks display of July first, 2023. We had some procurement questions, so we continued it to this meeting. Procurement is all set, so you can vote to affirm the contract. It's in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. It'll be covered by donations to the fireworks committee.
Do we need to sign it?
I believe Jonathan already signed it. So just leave you guys voting to approve the contract.
All right. So I'll take a motion to approve the contract with American Thunder Fireworks?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Municipal Assistance Coordinator Host Agreement.
Yes. So the town currently hosts a DEP. An individual that works for DEP at the recycling center. So we basically rent an office space that he can use. They can utilize. It expires June thirtieth, 2023. So we're just submitting an application again to continue this. It's definitely mutually beneficial for us and for DEP. We get the assistance of this employee of DEP. And also they get to utilize our space and we collect a fee from DEP.
What do you need us to do?
We just need you to vote to approve this. And Jonathan, you decide.
Okay. Do we have a second? Do we have a motion?
Sure. With that motion, so moved.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Municipal employee this week?
Yes. So, let's see. Margaret Selter, who is also known as Peggy, in our Board of Health. She has taken on the part-time position of our Conservation Administrative Assistant as well. So in order to do that, she technically have two separate positions. So this is just a disclosure form that needs to be submitted to the state. And ultimately, the Board of Selectmen just vote to sign off on it and approve it.
This is just approving what? She can hold the job?
Yes, exactly. But she would hold both positions. So she'll work for Conservation ten hours a week. And she'll work for the Board of Health thirty hours a week that she has passed.
No conflict there?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Recreational Gift Committee. I remember this. Long time ago.
So this is just, would be a vote of the Board to dissolve the Recreational Gift Committee. My understanding is there hasn't been many meetings or membership in quite some time. So there is no need for this committee anymore. So just trying to clean things up.
So a little bit of history. That was one of the developments in town back in the late nineties. And as part of that development, Mr. Salters made a donation to the town. It was pretty substantial. We used it, I think, to build the walking trail around the elementary school and a few other things. So then the money ran out.
Has it often ended up with that? Do we have a motion to dissolve the Recreational Gift Committee?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Harbor to the Bay Bike Ride.
Yes. So we were informed that on September twenty-third, there will be the twenty-first Annual Harbor to the Bay Ride. They were looking to host a pit stop in Halifax on fifty-eighth at the Halifax Boat Grand. So this would just be for your approval to allow that.
Did the police have a look at it yet?
This will be the last one though. This is their.
Okay. We have a motion to approve this bike pit stop.
So moved.
Discussion? Second? Discussion? No? Just checking the fact sheet. Looks good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck to them. Get a lot of bike rides. There we go. Moving right along. A donation from McDonald Industries to the Halifax Fireworks Committee.
Yes. So at our last meeting, we acknowledged one of the cannabis dispensaries who committed to donating ten thousand dollars a year to the fireworks committee. Since then, we also received a generous donation of ten thousand dollars from McDonald's Industries for the Halifax fireworks donation. So we just wanted to make that announcement, as we did with the cannabis dispensary, to thank McDonald's Industries for the donation.
Like an arm race. I know. What kind of?
We're still accepting.
Doesn't have to go to fireworks. So I suppose send them a thank you note?
Yes, for Johnson.
That's it. Yeah. Send them a letter.
Sorry. Closing of annual and special town meeting warrants. We just vote to do that?
Yep. This would just be a vote to close both the warrants. And at your next meeting, we'll give you an overview of the warrant for your review and approval.
All right. I'll move that we close the annual and special town meeting warrant. Second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Resignation of Tom Conley? I thought he resigned a while ago.
He did, but he just submitted his formal resignation. So we received this. And Tom notifying us that he would be resigning from the Finance Committee.
All right. So I'll move to accept it with regret.
If you'd like to, I'll second with a letter.
See, we're working this.
We got it. We got it.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. How many members are we short on finance now? Do you know?
I believe each one. You know, with Tom resigning. So we'll get something posted. What? It's where it's a resignation?
I see former Finance Committee people.
With it being a resignation, we will typically, it's a joint decision by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. We'll post it, have the Finance Committee kind of do their vetting, and then we'll bring that candidate forward to you for your final approval.
Good. Sounds great. Pine Street Bridge Contract Approved. Are they going to fix that bridge, really?
Yes. So this has been a project that's been in the works for quite some time. We went through with the procurement. We received bids. It actually came in lower than expected, which does not happen often, especially in this market. So the award would be for nine-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, five-hundred dollars to Kenefick Corp.
This has gone through the Highway Department. Everybody's approved it?
It is. Our legal council was reviewed. Steve Hayward has reviewed and approved. I've reviewed and approved. So it's just the final step for the Board to approve and sign off.
Okay. Awesome. I'll make a motion that we approve the Pine Street Bridge Contract. Second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. That's good. That's been a long time.
That's outstanding. Still a few minutes. So the next thing, meeting location. This is something that Cory and I talked, I'm sorry, Cody and I talked about a week or so ago. And talking like an old guy again. Last time I was doing this, one of the things we started to do and didn't finish very well was to occasionally hold a selectmen's meeting in a town building, not the town hall. And the point being that it gives us the opportunity to have people on TV, see some of the town buildings and departments will emphasize that department when we go there. I don't say we do it every week. Maybe once a quarter or two, three times a year, something like that. And so places that would work, I don't think the Council on Aging Building does, but if we could do it outside, that'd be great. But the library, the firehouse, the recycling center, maybe the town barn, school perhaps, you know. I just think it's a good community outreach thing. And it gives us the, gives the town the opportunity to see some of these things. And it gives us another chance. Some of the people feel like they are unrecognized because they don't, they just, because they do such a good job, nobody knows they exist, right? But this gives us a chance to say, okay, we're at the library, this is the library staff, and we can talk about that.
I love it. I love it. Do we know if Area Fifty-Eight has, will they be able to? Yeah. They have mobile equipment. So we'll work on that. It won't be before the summertime. I don't think we have time to put that all together. So we'll have to talk with, you know, various. Cody will talk with the department anyway?
Yeah. I'll talk with them and then maybe we can, I'll bring forward a proposed schedule at one of your next meetings. You can approve that.
It's a great idea.
Yeah. It's kind of fun, really.
Yeah. Antique brochure.
Yeah, making fun of overage. You had to do it.
All right. So who's got the timer?
I got the timer. I need a timer. Thirteen. We got two more minutes.
I don't know if we have enough time to talk about youth recreation earmarks.
Go through those quick.
Okay.
So at a previous meeting, Parks had been before you requesting some utilization of the earmark funds. The Board had directed them to go and provide us with more defined uses, projects they want to move forward with. And we also had been requested to reach out to Dick Steele of Recreation, Youth and Rec, to see if he had any interest in utilizing it. He's presented a couple of different projects that he'd like to move forward with. He's requesting half of funding, so twenty-five thousand dollars. He's looking to do some turf area at this, some stadium batting cages for about three thousand dollars. Looking to have some fencing done. That's for a tune of, and that's behind the elementary school. That's about a thousand dollars.
Where would this turf be going?
So the turf is going, you know the batting cage behind the school?
Yeah.
It's gotten, if you haven't seen it in a while, it's destroyed. It's in disrepair. So much like the turf we have at the softball field here, they would look to finally make that like a functioning batting cage again and use the turf. It's pretty high-quality turf. It'll last us a long time. And I think it's a great use of the funds because as of right now, it's a great batting cage that no one can really use.
It's been a rough, it's been a rough repat for a while.
Sure. So I think it's well spent.
Okay. Good.
There's also a request for four thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars in here to just put some work into the fields. So Shea Field, widen base lines.
Shea Field, line up.
Yeah. So Shea Field is, you have dirt, you have dirt paths and you have grass along the sides. And we've developed over time a basically a gully in the base paths. It's almost actually a safety issue because, you know, we're getting a lot of twisted ankles. So I know that they want to rework that field. And then I know Cody, one of the other fields he mentioned was the Babe Ruth Field, which is if you're going back there, it's that one on the far left. That's fallen into disrepair. That needs some work. So the fields need some love back there. So I think it would definitely help the town.
Yep. In addition, there was the softball field, the batting cage, and the T-ball field. Adding stone dust where needed to all of those. And just really some maintenance on the fields.
How does all this work with what the Parks Department was doing? Is there enough money for all of them?
Well, if they're looking to split it, we, you know, we had requested Parks to submit to us a budget. They haven't. And, you know, Youth and Rec has, this is their proposed use. At that meeting, you would request that we reach out to Youth and Rec and see if they have a use. And this is their response to that.
So I don't recall exactly the specifics of our discussion with the Parks people, but were they in agreement to split it?
Their preference was to utilize most of it because they don't get the funding that Youth and Rec get, but.
But we still haven't gotten anything.
We have not gotten anything from them.
When does this have to be done by?
The sooner the better because we have to get the information into the state in order to get the money. So we can't get enough funding until we submit to them a budget of how we're going to use it.
Can we wait a week or two weeks rather?
Yes. Yeah. I think we can wait two weeks, but I'd say we watch.
I just, I know, I know they're dragging their heels on it and they kind of stumble around on it, but I would like to give them at least one more chance to come in and take a look at this before we make that decision. I mean, I think all those projects are meritorious. We should do them. But we also, the Parks people had their own set of things that they were interested in, although they weren't very clear about it now. So I would just like to just give them to say, look, this is it. We have a whole bunch of requests for half the money. We're about to approve it. Let us know if you have anything you want. Okay. All right. So let's do that.
Should we put them on the agenda or just put them a deadline of the next selectman meeting?
Yeah. I'll actually see if we can get the information. It may be beneficial to have both of them in, Youth and Rec and Parks to come in.
If there's any kind of conflict or anything.
And just have a discussion on if they'd like to use the funds.
And I hate to delay it, but on the other hand, I just, I just like to balance things out. Okay. Good. All right. So it's got to be six fifteen now. We have the Mr. Niffen and Mr. Hodges, the Friends of the Library, and they're looking for a little free library. Nothing comes free, so I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, I'm talking to a fine stocker.
Good. So just identify, Joe. If you could just identify, guys, because we got folks that are all over us about open meeting laws, we want to make sure we can identify your name and your address.
I'm Bob Hodge.
No, you're not. No, you're not.
I'm Bob Niffen. This is Bob Hodge.
Betsy Hodge.
Candy Niffen.
We're not the Friends.
It's like a night out for you folks. Good.
We're here on behalf of the Friends of the Library, looking to get permission to place two little free library units on town property. The first one would be placed, I think you should have received a packet.
We did.
First one would be placed over at Hops under the gazebo. And the second one would be placed on the Route thirty-six beach area. The first one at the gazebo, we're looking at placing it, there's a picture there, and it would be in the far right-hand corner, attached to the fencing there that's already there. Scott McTerna kindly said that he would help with the installation of that. And so that would be, just a little aside, when Bob and I were looking at places that looked like they might be good places to place these, there were two ladies there with their kids at the playground. So we took an informal poll. We told them what we were doing. And we got a very positive response, a hundred percent of response, that this was a great idea. Free little library there. So in our polling, you know, very positive polling. I'm sure Gallup will hire us. Positive feedback. The other one would be over at Route thirty-six beach. Near the gazebo, yeah. The kiosk that's there, maybe a little closer to the street by the tree that's there. You can see in the picture. Driving by every once in a while, it looks like the tree might be a better place, a little closer to the sidewalk. It's one of those things where, you know, you're arranging furniture in the living room and put a chair there and say, maybe, maybe over here. So that would be a freestanding one on its own post. These free little libraries, it's quite a, quite a undertaking worldwide, a hundred-and-fifty thousand, I guess, worldwide. I think I attached to that a map of the area. It's kind of hard to read without a guide. It just shows where some of the free libraries, the food free libraries are in our area. And there's a couple that have numbers on them. That's that area. There's like, I'd say four, there's four free little libraries in that area. So they're all a little place. These would be maintained by the Friends of the Library. The books in them would be from our annual book sale or our going book sale, contributions from people that actually use the libraries, the kind of thing where hopefully people would come and borrow a book, leave a book, and that type of thing. So that would be, this would be going into the shelves of the library. The books are, would be actually donations. And maintained by the Friends of the Library. And the, what's it called? Free little libraries themselves.
They would leave their souvlit shoes. Souvlit, they, and then the cums goes in. So it's been a community event.
That's great.
This is the plaque that's going to go on once we decide where they're going to be, so that we'll know what side to put it on.
That's awesome.
Yes.
So what do you do from us? Just a?
Operation. It's the vote saying, yeah, go ahead and do it.
Yeah. Well, I would definitely not. You're the only illiterate on the board here. We're going to vote you out. So I will make a motion that we approve the Friends of the Library, Little Free Library as presented. All set. Any discussion? No, not at all. Thank you. Thank you, guys. All those in favor say aye. All right. That's great. That's wonderful. Wonderful work. It's awesome.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Fantastic. All right. We have a few minutes before the planning ward. So you want to do approval of ARPA? Oh, oh, we just talked about that. So we're down to the updates.
We haven't done the ARPA yet. I'm trying to think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So you may recall the town, as part of the American Rescue Plan Act, the town received some of the money. And the county also received a sum of money on behalf of the town. Part of that funding is earmarked for specific water sewer HVAC projects. But there's also a portion of that funding that we can use for loss revenue ultimately. And the town had previously allocated a significant portion of this funding. So in reviewing with department heads and Sandy Nolan, Town Accountant, we said it may be a good idea to allocate some more of this funding. It has to be committed by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026. So in your packets here is a list of projects that I would request your approval on. I'll go through each project here. With the approval of these projects, we'd be left with about a hundred thousand dollars in the ARPA funding. The first project is HR Services. This was previously approved. This is Jack Dolan. His HR on-demand services for the town. As you know, we don't have a dedicated HR department. So Jack provides those services. It certainly helps. It's not exactly what we need, but it's definitely helpful. So this would be for another year of those services. The school HVAC, we're going to skip over at this point because I'm still waiting on a final number from Matt Durkey. Town furniture, if you go around town, you'll see many of our employees and staff are dealing with less than adequate furniture, chairs that are broken, desks that are falling apart, meeting tables that aren't necessarily to the standard we need. So this would be a request for fifty thousand dollars to upgrade some of our furniture across town. We've previously discussed upgrading the great hall with audiovisual and making it more conducive to having meetings, trainings for our staff. So there's fifty thousand dollars requested in here for that. The next one is a ViewSonic board for five thousand dollars. That's similar to this screen, although it has, it's a touchscreen, it's interactive, has a built-in camera, built-in computer. It really would allow for Zoom meetings. I see it more as a tool for when we have internal meetings or opportunities, trainings for our staff. It would be great for that. We could gather and use.
What does it, it's like a TV screen or that we can?
It's basically a huge computer. So it's that, it's that screen, but it's a computer with a built-in computer. And it's on a stand similar to that, but it allows us to.
Is this something we could use at town meetings and broadcast like each article?
We could, yeah.
I think that'd be, I think that'd be a real upgrade in our town meeting to have absolutely visual that everybody can see.
Yep. We could absolutely look at it as something like that. Fire quarters for fifty thousand dollars. This is, our sleeping cores in the fire department need to be upgraded and create some separate sleeping areas. So there's a fifty thousand dollar request in here for that. The fire CPR machine, we have two CPR machines, one for each ambulance. One of the machines recently went down. It's about ten years old. It would be about eight thousand dollars to fix, but they have a life expectancy of ten to fifteen years. So at this point, it makes more sense for us to purchase a new machine and trade in the old machine that has some value left. And an IT consultant for thirty thousand dollars. This would be an opportunity for us to bring in an IT consultant to do a network assessment, just look at our infrastructure is all in place, create opportunities to make sure that there's no single point of failure. And also help with getting us up to date on network upgrades and things to that nature.
I had thought about the furniture upgrade and honestly, I do think some of the, you can tell the tables are going to get all the heat up. But one of the things we talked about before Cody was brought on actually, was taking a visit around the town hall in particular and reorienting the space. And I think in conjunction with new furniture, that would be a good time to do it. Like you have somebody in the back closet there who doesn't belong in, should be out somewhere else. We can move other things around and do all that. So I, I mean, I think all these things are good ideas. Money has to be spent anyway, so.
Yeah. They all seem, to me, none of these seem frivolous in nature. I think they're all needs that the town has. So that'd be all for every, every single one of them. And Cody, we're waiting on a number for the school? Is that the deal on the HVAC?
Yes. We thought we had a solid number, but unfortunately it wasn't. So it's either just wait and then give you a solid number to vote on.
Do you bid? Do you have to bid that first and then get the number or?
Well, there's energy projects are a little bit different. They can fall under an exemption for procurement. And this would technically be an energy efficiency upgrade with some air conditioning in the back of the school. So we may not have to go for the full procurement because it may fall under an exemption.
All right. So what do you want us to do?
You would vote to approve the ARPA projects as presented. You would vote to approve the ARPA projects as presented.
Okay, so I'll make a motion, we approve all of the presented ones except for the HVAC, which we just won't, we'll just want to address.
All right, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. We're right on schedule, so at 6:30, and we have planning board, who's here. Good, good. And could you hear us from Florida and everything?
I brought the rain with me. Nice going, Chris.
So this was, I requested the planning board, members of the planning board to come in and just have a discussion with us. This stems from both our, our planning and zoning support staff, secretary positions have been vacant for some time. Initially, it was those two plus our conservation. You just heard, I previously mentioned that we hired Peggy to fill that role. We're still working to fill these two roles. They're both, they're each 15 and a half hours a week. In a lot of communities, you know, planning and zoning, they go hand in hand, they have a lot of similarities. So in order to make it a more attractive position, provide better services to both planning and zoning, I had presented the idea of combining the positions and creating a full-time position, planning and zoning administrative assistant. Basically, you know, same levels of support, but somebody would be here in town hall pretty much full-time, so it's only a benefit. So I did present a letter to the planning board at their last meeting. They had discussed it and did not recommend moving forward with that. So I thought it would be good for them to come in and just get a better understanding of the reason they weren't for it. And then also just for us to discuss, so we're all on the same page, the oversight or onboarding process for this position, whether we create it full-time or it stays part-time and separate, just making sure that we're all on the same page, where this is a position that supports the planning board, but ultimately does not work directly for the planning board. And by that, they would ultimately, we don't have a building commissioner right now, but the building commissioner position had previously overseen these, they're called regulatory. This would fall under the regulatory. And, you know, with that being said, I had requested in that letter to planning to choose an individual to represent them, to include them in the interview process. We value, you know, the feedback. We want planning's feedback. And we would do the same thing with zoning. It's not at all to take them out of the process, but, you know, municipal government is really professionalized over the past 30, 40 years. And, you know, an individual taking this position, this is, this is a career, this is a job, this isn't, you know, necessarily a volunteer position. So we have to treat it as such. You know, there's certain guidelines through the Fair Labor Standards Act that we have to follow, you know, human resource protocols we need to follow, interview questions, and so on and so forth. So more just a dialogue, you know, to have the planning board in or members of the board and get their perspective and make sure we're all on the same page moving forward.
Can I, can I ask a question though? Does the zoning board and planning board secretary attend the meetings at night when they have those meetings?
Historically, what do you mean? We have two meetings a month at night and the zoning board maybe once a month.
Right. Either way, but is it, you usually have your secretary there for that meeting?
Yes.
So they do, they're not necessarily all time, daytime. They actually have, like Ann does, like some meeting hours.
I mean, so it would be, it would be three meetings a month ultimately. And I think as long as you're upfront with someone in that position, I don't foresee that as an issue.
Any thoughts, any comments? Just, Rick, would you just tell us who you're beginning, because it's on, you know, the court.
Richard Mary, planning board.
Thank you.
I don't know, we just, I was up in the air about the best way to go. I mean, one, one way sounds good, the other, it's the way it's been for a while and it's worked. You know, if there's a problem, I'll fix it. But a little different situation before when you had Joanne and Alana and that, because Joanne was basically there for Alana, so it worked out great, done together. Now it's a whole different story. You know, it would be nice having somebody in there all the time. Like I said, you know, 15 hours and then they got to go to meetings too. They'll be in the office all the time. So, you know, that's, that's a plus, so I don't like.
Is the planning board and zoning board offices, what are their normal hours? Like, are they, are they closed on Friday?
There aren't any hours right now.
So we don't have a left for? Right, 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 right. What would have been the normal hours?
It varied before because it was only, you know, less than 15 hours a week. So it was a, it wasn't a normal town hall office hour schedule.
And that, that was the big thing too. You could call up to make a point on, or you'd get a recording. You know, Joanne will be in on Wednesday from 1:00 to whatever, but it was 15 and a half hours. And I had a discussion with Cody and whatnot, and I don't know, I personally don't see, I don't see the argument for not doing this, to be honest with you. It really kind of doesn't make sense. And I don't know what the difference would be whether it comes under the secretary, would come under the direction and purview of the planning board only versus what we're doing now. What would be the difference?
Well, the planning board voted before to have control over the secretary.
Control, that's the whole thing, control.
I mean, I don't know what that was all about.
Exactly.
Instead of being, you know, the villain, you know, building bottom, whatever it was before. I mean, I think the only concerns about this was, you know, creating a full-time position and insurance and all that and, you know, how that works.
And again, the concerns also, not to, I interrupted it. The other concern was, you know, as far as training a person who's under the direction of the, of the planning board. I mean, Cody brought it up, really would, and I'm simplifying it. What do you guys know about it? You know, about training and who to hire and who to interview and whatnot? And basically, bottom line, even, let's say even liability wise, it would all come under the purview of the town hall effects. So I should think that that's where the interview process and the, and the correct questions to be asked and the background and all that thing would certainly do a heck of a better job. I would like, I mentioned to Cody, I'd like to participate in it and sure, you know, sit in and, and if, you know, if I, if I could, and if they were looking for someone to volunteer for it, yeah, that'd be great. But again, I, I see the benefit of 36 hours a week, I think is what they were talking about, where at least if somebody from the public had a question, and brand spanken new, I'm sure the secretary, administrative assistant, whatever, would probably not know the answer, but at least you have somebody working on, on finding out what the answer is as opposed to calling Wednesday, you know, trying to get back. It just seems to make sense to me.
Maybe posting a full-time job too would be more appealing to.
I think you'd get a much, much more qualified.
So I gather that you guys are in favor of a regulatory secretary, planning and zoning, a full-time administrative assistant is what it would be. I mean, I think, I think in terms of the hiring process, we could, we could easily set up whatever screening committee or hiring committee you wanted to do, right? We wouldn't be such a hard thing to do. And we need a job, job descriptions would be pretty clear anyway, so.
And the other question also was, it seemed we were kind of going back and forth, yes you did, no you didn't, yes you did. Does it have to go to town meeting or a special town meeting or, you know, to approve it? We were told, yes it did. I listened to two different meetings on September and October, and it seemed the answer was no, it did not have to, as long as they had hours specified for both, you know, 15 and a half, 15 and a half.
It's, well, we wouldn't be creating a new position because an administrative assistant position exists in our bylaw. So it would just be a budgetary approval, and we already have the existing funding because you had 15 and a half and 15 and a half. So you'd really just be combining the two budgets. And then we would make the, the request going forward as a combined request rather than separate. But it's not a, you wouldn't need a town meeting approval on the position because it's, we're not creating a new position. We're just budgeting, yeah, we're budgeting for a position that already exists.
And the only other concern was, I don't mean to clog him all the time. The only other concern was, like, and Cody and I had talked about, as long as they knew right upfront, you have one meeting a month for zoning and you have two at night to avoid an overtime issue, you know, that was a concern also. How are you going to get someone to, but imposing a position, you know, and being right upfront about it, you know, like Rick said, at a better rate, I think you're going to get a better qualif, qualified.
So in my time here, one thing I noticed with our regulatory boards was that there wasn't a lot of sharing between the boards as far as this project is at this level with this board but hasn't gone to this board, you know what I'm saying? So there seemed to be a lot of confusion between boards. There really was a disconnect. So when I read this proposal, to me, it makes a lot of sense in that you don't have, that hopefully will eliminate some of that, where you have, I don't know where we're at on this board, but you're at here with this board, you know what I'm saying? So to me, that makes sense to try to limit the game of telephone, you know, between boards.
And there is a law of similar questions and answers going back and forth in the boards that really could be the answer.
Yeah, no, it's okay. And I like the availability, you know, of being able to bump up the hours because I've also seen people coming to town hall and see the locked door and, oh, they're not here today, you know? So I think the town would be receptive to, you know, having more access to that and to smoothing over the process. So to me, it makes a lot of sense, but, you know, what I want to do with the board, that's me.
Question in back?
Yeah, Mary Gravines, 98, Clyde O'Wosworth. I just had a question. Was it considered at all to maybe make the building department, building, planning, zoning, conservation kind of one department and have the secretary for the building inspector, but also have a full-time person who works, say, conservation planning? Like, have them all kind of be in one department so that, and I think that is the problem, is that you go to a meeting and nobody knows what anybody's doing. But if you have one person, you know, maybe the secretary for the building department and then the administrative assistant who is for the planning and zoning, and then do you have an admin for conservation or no? Kind of have that one, like, have it be under one purview with one office and kind of job share? I think they all, they should maybe know what everybody else's job is, so when we get in a situation where there isn't somebody, they can kind of pick up and say, okay, I can cover her, or I can answer that question, or I can do whatever. I feel like a lot more of that should probably be looked at for going down the road.
One of the things that we do have on the schedule right now, I don't know if we've got the grant yet to do it, the human resources, the reclassification thing.
Yep, we got the grant.
So we do have a substantial amount of money. We're going to hire a consultant to basically go through the whole wage and personnel bylaw and make recommendations on that kind of thing, including, and including wage rates and all of that type of thing. So I think we all agree that our wage, our, well, we don't have a human resources department, we have a wage and personnel bylaw, which is an antiquated way of doing business. And it's time to change that. And I think that those types of issues will come up in that discussion. We won't have it until, hopefully we'll have it by next year. That would be the plan. So it's on, it's definitely on the, on the agenda.
To your point, we, we do that exactly, and that's, that's one of the driving reasons why I brought up this idea. But it already is happening. So our Board of Health staff has stepped in and has taken on the conservation administrative position, you know, with kind of her expertise and being familiar with the town, we were able to reduce the hours at that position, actually. And our building administrative assistant has taken on helping with the planning board and zoning board, and so has our Board of Health administrative assistant, she's taken on planning and zoning. So, you know, it's a lot of tasks and you still need the staff dedicated for it, but in the meantime, it's kind of allowed operations to at least continue status quo because our staff has stepped out and they have been cross-trained in those areas.
And I think they can learn a lot from each other, but I do think it's training as well as like, you know, from the planning board. I've just recently, in the past year or two, started going to them and it's, there's a lot, there's a lot. So I think it's important that everybody, they can learn from each other. I just think it would be a smart idea.
We use the planning board, we lost with Calhoun and Peggy, they've been, they've been aces.
So that's the whole deal is that, you know, we've been around a long time, and going back 25 or 30 years ago, it was a different world in terms of not only how we ran the town, it was a lot more casual that way, and could be, but also in terms of just the regulations that have changed, right? So, I mean, building codes and, and.
Peggy's done some research too. She's called around to a couple different towns, surrounding area, and done a little research we were talking about a week. And that's what, like, John, you were talking about, it's what it's come around to, they really haven't broken down, you know, part-time, part-time, part-time for each one. It's a one person you go to and walks you through the process. And that's been a problem in the past.
Cody's points right on that, you know, again, going back, at least in our memory, back that far, and, you know, really, those secretary jobs, what they were, where, you know, somebody, mother's hours, they would work, you know, a couple hours in the night, take minutes, and that was it, right? But the whole world's changed, I think, especially for regulatory stuff in particular. Conservation, planning, and zoning has just really gotten crazy. And we need professional people to do it, so.
And one thing, not to put the cart before the horse, but I was also talking with Cody about looking at automating some of our permitting. There are online programs and systems that do a lot of it for us as far as submitting an application. It immediately goes to the people it needs to go to. It eliminates a lot of the paper trail. They don't have to physically come into town hall to file their permits. So we might be able to have some cost savings there if we can kind of streamline the process and make it a little bit more of a user-friendly experience. If they want to file their paperwork Saturday night at 11, go right ahead, you know? They don't have to physically come into town hall. So I would like to at least, I know a lot of towns, not a lot of towns, but towns do online permitting, and I think we should, as a town, take a look at it.
That's a great idea. Not only is it a cost savings, but it's also consumer-friendly, like you say. You don't have to take time out of your day to run to town hall during the day that we're open, so.
Yeah, no, I think that's the way the regulatory stuff is going, and I think we should take a look at it.
Okay, what do you want us to do?
So you would vote to combine the planning and zoning positions to create a full-time position.
I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I think it's a good step forward.
Do you have to post a whole new job?
I'll send, I'll send you guys the job description I drafted. It's ultimately just a combination of the two. And it's, it's something that's used in a lot of other communities as well. And then at your next meeting, if you can just have it on your agenda to choose one person to serve on the interview committee, and that way they're one from planning, one from zoning, I'll be on it, and then we can move forward with interviews.
And when would the change actually take effect? It's on the new hire, you know, for signing off payroll, for, you know, doing that type of thing, that's, that's what I'm concerned with. So it, now, it has been in the past, gone through the building department, and that was the big discussion, back and forth, who would sign off on payroll, meet somebody.
Yep, so this, this position will report to the building commissioner once we have one, an intern, they'll report to my office.
Great. Just so it's not confusing.
Can I make a suggestion, just because, oh, sorry, I have to say my name again. Gravines, 98, Clyde O'Wosworth. When, maybe when marketing or advertising this, maybe it might be a good idea to market towards someone who's interested in construction management or real estate or business development because some of the younger kids coming out looking at these jobs say, oh, town, you know, town, you know, secretary for conservation. They're not going to look at that, but if it says, you know, an opportunity to learn about the construction and municipal business and stuff like that, it might get maybe more of a, you know, someone who's interested in maybe moving, moving up and learning from the ground up. Do you know what I mean?
Catch more eyes.
Yeah.
That's good. Sure.
Just a suggestion.
I think you should send a draft.
All those in favor?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we're just a few minutes behind now on Fort Dyke Development. Gentlemen, you want to come on up front for us? Good thing the planning board people are here because they'll be interested in this, I'm sure. If they're going to make.
Where would you like us?
Yeah, where should we put?
I want us to do it over here. Yeah, I want to do it right over here.
Yeah, that's, actually, that's probably the best spot. Could you just start and identify yourself for the recordings?
Yes, my name is Lloyd Geisinger. I'm the president of Fort Dyke Development Corporation, and this is my partner, David Eastridge. And we are the two faces that you will see the most of moving forward. So. So, no, I don't want to go over there. So, I wanted to come in and first give you an update on where we are with the 265 Mon Pontiff property, and also mention the property across the street, 266, which we have also purchased. But more importantly, Mr. Seelick reached out to me about a month ago to inquire whether or not he would have an interest in exploring alternate development plans for the property. And we had a conversation, bounced some ideas around, and as a result of that, we had investigated a senior housing alternative to this that we wanted to discuss with the board, a much smaller project in scale, and see if it would have interest. It would require a town meeting action if there was interest in pursuing this, so it's a process, but something that we're excited about discussing with you. And it's just the beginning of a discussion, if, you know, if that makes sense. But let me start, if I could, by just updating you. We received our project eligibility letter from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership about four to six weeks ago.
Yeah.
And as I believe the board is aware, since I recognize faces that were at our walk-around, that was a process that we've gone through over the past six months. The comprehensive permit process, more commonly called 40B, it requires that anyone interested, any development group interested in pursuing a affordable housing proposal must first file with the Department of Housing and Community Development and either Mass Housing Partnership or Mass Housing, very confusingly, such similar names, but they provide the same function of reviewing and vetting the initial application, and that's step one before we're able to apply to the town with an actual proposal. We have received that authorization, which means that we are now able to file specific plans with the zoning board of appeals. And to refresh people's memory, the application that was approved by MHP and which is shown on this plan here calls for 200 apartments in a series of three-story buildings on 265 Mon Pontiff, that's what's shown on this plan. We have not filed at this time a, what would amount to a phase two, which would be a single building across the street. Just by way of giving you a little sense, a reminder of the imagery, this is the typical building, the three-story, typical apartment building. Each building includes 36 units in it, and would be three stories. One of the things that was driving the proposal that we made is the fact that a project of scale would require an on-site sewage treatment facility. Those sewer treatment plants run $2.5 million to build, and they push these types of developments into that 200-unit range because to do any less and take the cost of that plant and try and spread it across the units winds up making the projects uneconomic. We had an interest at the outset, but as you know, this property has a very colorful history, in looking at other options. And so, when Mr. Seelick reached out, I was intrigued. There are permits in place based on the old project that was a permitted for a septic field of just under 10,000 gallons, which is a magic number in the environmental regulatory world. If your total usage is 10,000 gallons or less, you don't need to build a sewer treatment plant. It's just a big septic field, is all it is. That would translate into allowing us to build two of these buildings rather than five. If we were to pursue a senior housing proposal, we could, and we've taken a look at this, make it work financially to reduce the 200-unit affordable project, which would not be age-restricted, to a 72-unit senior housing project, over 55, age-restricted, which would also not permit children under the age of 18, which is, we do a lot of these types of developments, and our experience has been that seniors who are interested in living in a community of like-minded people are not interested in having a whole bunch of kids running around, and that is permitted under federal law. It's a carve-out. I understand that this might sound a little crazy to you, is how did it make sense to do 72 versus 200, and it all relates to that treatment plant. So, for us, with the 72 units, we don't have to go through a MICA process, we don't have to go through a very expensive permitting process for the treatment plant, let alone building the treatment plant. That process is a minimum of 18 months to get through, so it means that we can be in the ground theoretically a little bit sooner. Not necessarily a good thing right now, but something we would like the flexibility to do. And from our perspective, this location is a good location for both uses. You know, the same reasons that attracted us to this site for an apartment community proximity to the Stop &amp; Shop, the Walmart, the shopping district, easy access, is also attractive to seniors. And frankly, seniors would value the golf course across the street as well as another amenity, which certainly would have value to a non-age-restricted audience, but more so to seniors. So, the thought then would be to eliminate these buildings, build the two buildings more towards the rear, obviously, we would come up with a new site plan, and then still build a single building across the street. As I mentioned to Cody, he was kind enough to meet with us late last week. Ironically, we had a very, very similar situation come up 20 years ago in Norton, and we built a project called Great Brook, which is directly across the street from the Roach Brothers there. It's now, 2001 we started, right?
Yes.
Two weeks after 9/11, right? Right. Yeah.
My first day was November 1, 2000.
Yeah. And that was a situation in which there was originally a Walmart proposed on that property, and it was commercially zoned, and the Walmart decided at the last minute to go somewhere else. I don't even know where. And the person who had been doing the permitting for Walmart approached the selection about doing senior housing on that piece of property. And they moved forward with a very simple zoning change that permitted active adult senior housing, housing for the elderly is what they actually called it, in a commercial zone only. And we wound up building out that project of 116 units and actually building another 150 units on a different commercial site elsewhere in town. But where this property directly abuts a commercial zone, and this land is in fact zoned commercial across the street, one option would be to rezone this portion, not the whole 25 acres, commercial. And the benefit to that would be that it's the only place where the over 55 could go. In other words, if there was a zoning change to allow for senior housing, it would be linked to the specific zone in which it was permitted. There are other ways to think about it, but I just wanted to get this out there as one thing that I happen to know worked and worked very well in Norton. So, in that case, the density that was permitted was driven by the coverage ratios, just like you would with a commercial building, a commercial land, I should say, as opposed to a unit count. In our case, we would be maxed out by the leaching field. It's impossible, I use that word literally, to build a leaching field that accepts more than 10,000 gallons a day under DEP regulations, and the senior housing community, they allocate 150 gallons per unit, and that's how you get to the 72 units. So, that would be a very workable plan for us. We're very happy to go forward with this project, but I understand that it's a big project, something that would be new to the town of Halifax. We all read the papers, we all know what's going on in the state with housing and 40B. I, as a developer, a responsible developer, believe in this type of product. I'm not crazy about the 40B statute. It's a little bit like a blunt force instrument. I wish we had a better way of meeting our housing needs. But I must say that if, as we look at various sites in various communities, my professional opinion is that this is a good location for this type of apartment community, adjacent to the commercial, at a signalized intersection already. It would be well-received, it would tend to attract young people who want to stay in the area. I mean, this is, this is a location where I think you would draw a fairly small circle in terms of people who are looking to find affordable housing. By affordable, I don't necessarily mean subsidized housing, I mean just affordable, which we would be able to do here. So, if the town is interested in supporting us in this, we're not really interested in... We like to work cooperatively, you know, because we've been doing that, been doing this for almost 40 years, and we've never picked a fight with the community. So, when Mr. Seelick suggested looking at options, you know, this was in the back of my mind, but the only reason we didn't bring it out before was because it requires a town meeting. And things were a little bit unsettled last year here in Halifax, and it didn't seem like the right time to put something like this on the table. If this board feels that it's something that it would like to investigate further, that's all I'm asking. That's the only question I'm asking today. I'm not asking for support, I'm only asking whether this is something that you would like to hear more about. And if you do, we would put our 40B on hold while we explore this. I want to mention one more thing, and I'll respond to questions or shut up, whichever you want me to do. We also had a conversation about, we are involved in two other communities in this whole MBTA community issue with housing. We are working with the town of Kingston right now, a very major project in which we were going forward with permitting on a, we have under contract with Sacred Heart High School property in Kingston, which is 84 acres of land, a very major project that we're looking forward in a very cooperative way with the town. And along the way, the town manager, Keith Hickey, and the town fan of Al Mousar approached us as to whether or not we would consider that they would like to designate a portion of our development as their, for their MBTA allocation that doesn't need to be within a half mile of the station. You folks, I understand that it's a new station. And so, we're doing that. We're moving forward with the town in that regard. Of course, you have a train station as well. We looked into and contacted the owner of a very large portion of land that immediately abuts the train station. It's hard getting to find him, he's actually in California for the winter, but he was very cooperative once we met him, and he would have an interest in selling that property. I only mention this because if we're not going to go forward with the 40B here, and the town had an interest in looking into housing adjacent to the train station, we would certainly have an interest in working with the town to investigate that. They're not linked, we're perfectly willing to go forward with senior housing here and not go forward with apartment proposal here. But separately, if that's something that you want to investigate, we're in both businesses. We build rental communities and we build senior housing communities. They're both going on right now.
Can I ask you a question? So, the 70 units...
72.
72 units that you're talking about.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Plus the 30 plus.
That's the question. So, it would be 100.
102.
Would they still be three floors?
Yeah, yes, it would be this built. You know, the unit styles inside the building would be a little bit different to reflect the senior component, but effectively, this is, this is what we would expect the buildings to look like, very, very similar to this. And of course, the, you know, the adjacent condominium development community there is two stories, and then on the other side, we have the housing authority property.
One story.
Which is only one story, yes.
Lloyd, just curious, do you have room to put that? I know you have the property across the street. It seems like you'd have room to put the three over there. Is it an issue with the septic that's preventing you from moving that building across the street?
Yes. Yes, they would need to be two separate projects. Ultimately, they would function as one in terms of whatever amenity package we developed, but we own them with two different entities. We would, we need to keep them entirely separate.
Separate leaching fields and everything?
Separate leaching fields, yes. So, we've already perked this property here, and we know that there's adequate perivable soil to put in a septic system to handle that one 30-unit building.
If you were to move forward with the age-restricted project, you know, I think historically, some developers, where it requires kind of town meeting approval, have made contributions to the community. Is that something you've considered? You know, we're looking to build a new council on aging that may tie in well with age-restricted properties such as this?
Well, yes, the short answer is yes. We understand that this needs to work for both of us, and the, you know, I was poking around on your website, and I saw, and of course, when we started thinking about senior housing, that was the first thing I did, was look at what Halifax has going for council on aging, because there's often a close connection between the two. We just, I actually closed on the very last unit of a 224-unit active adult age-restricted project at the back of Colony Place in Plymouth. It's called Sawyer's Reach, and it had 60, how many other townhouses?
62.
62 townhouses, and the remainder were, were these types of buildings, flat roof, but otherwise three-story elevated buildings. And so, they sold extremely well, you know? We're getting, we're all getting into, not you, but we're getting, you're not either, but we're getting, we're in that age, and you're getting close now.
I'm getting there.
So, broken in.
And, you know, it's a real problem. It's just not make believe, you know? This housing thing's, it's a mess. And one of the biggest issues, frankly, is that we don't have a place to go. And so, we're, seniors are staying in that three- and four-bedroom house that they raise their families in longer than they want to because the options don't work for them. So, what does that mean? It means you don't get the turnover in those homes in all the towns, it's not just Halifax, everywhere. And, you know, you look at what's happening to school populations, you know? 10 years ago, they were going like this. Now, they're all going down, and it's going to get worse, not better. Now, at a certain point, it becomes very problematic, as you know, because your fixed costs don't change any, and if your classroom sizes get too small, everything's starting to fall apart. My youngest son is a music teacher at Franklin High School, you know? Not exactly a secure position when budgets come under attack. So, the, so the short answer to your question, Cody, is yes, we are willing to do something. In fact, we were looking at the 3D modeling of the proposed council on aging building there, and we started kicking around the fact that we would normally build a clubhouse for a senior housing community like this. And if we wind up building just two buildings towards the back of the property, which is where we'd want to put them, get them a little more away from the road, abutting conservation land, I don't know how the town would feel about it, but we thought this might be a very good site for the council on the senior center, and something that we would be willing to participate in its cost. I mean, once we knew, had real plans, we could tell you how much of that we could do, but we can certainly donate the land, and we can certainly contribute to the cost, and we might even be able to do it in such a way that we build it and gift it to the town, which would have all sorts of benefits in terms of process and cost. You know, we already have, we'll have a team of, we have our own construction... You know, we already have, we'll have a team of, we have our own construction company, so, you know, we already would have a construction superintendent and everyone else on site, so folding in the construction of something like that and not charging construction management fees, not charging profit, participating in, in the cost of building it, donating the land. I'm saying all this because it's a win-win. I mean, for our people, having a senior center that is, that has activities that are programmed and whatnot is a very attractive and appealing thing. We would probably still build a pool and a small pool house exclusively for our residents, but we wouldn't build a full bowl of clubhouse. And the, and I guess the last thing I would say in that regard is, our experience at the Colony Place project Sawyer's Reach was that we were building townhouses and we were building three-story elevated buildings side by side. So it was like an incubator, looking at the type of customers that we were attracting. And what we found was that for the elevated buildings, the average age was older, probably early 70s, whereas the townhouses tended to be mid-60s. And a lot of seniors who maybe moved into townhouses 10 years ago are now aging. They don't want to go into an assisted living facility for a whole bunch of reasons, but they're, but they, even those few stairs that you get in a townhouse can be problematic, or they're worried that they will be problematic in the future. And so they're very attracted to these types of elevated buildings. They also tend to feel a little more secure. We sell more than half of our homes to single women. They outlive us. They, they like to own property, and of course, there are a whole bunch of divorced women out there, too. So our feeling is that that age group would be particularly interested in the activities that a senior center would offer, and so it would be a very nice fit.
So these are all apartment buildings, right? That's what you're...
These would be for sale. These are condominiums.
Oh, condominiums. Oh, I understood.
The apartment, this 40B is, would be an apartment.
Oh, okay. So what you're talking about now...
I'm sorry, I should have made that clear.
Okay.
Yeah, so we would be switching from rental to for sale. We don't do, we don't, doing a rental senior project is very hard.
Yeah, okay. I just wasn't, I missed.
No, I'd like to say it, my fault.
The other thing is, so how, what kind of timeframe would you think you would need in order to kind of flesh out this proposal a little bit, so we could have, you know, a view of what, you know, what the landscape would look like and everything?
Well, we're, we're actively building these types of communities elsewhere right now. So we have architectural plans. We've already done all the engineering work for this. I mean, we were actually ready to submit.
Yeah.
So all the base information is there. It wouldn't take us more than a few weeks to pull something together. I will also mention that I did look, we did run a cash flow on the 72, the 102, like I keep saying 72, but I really should be saying 102. 102 unit at over 55. Obviously, it would be age-restricted, so there wouldn't be school-aged kids. It would be privately maintained. We wouldn't be looking to the town to plow the roads or that kind of things. And based on the numbers that we're carrying, which is selling homes from the low fours to the high fours, kind of in that fourth, the days of being able to sell them to threes, they're gone, we would generate about $850,000 a year in taxes to the town of Halifax. And as part of our presentation, if we do go forward with this, we would be happy to do a fiscal impact study. There's an outfit called RKG Associates that's very well-respected. They do a lot of these things. We're actually working with them on the Kingston property right now, and so that's something we could do also, so that you could take a look at it and see what, how it really shakes out.
Okay. And then the final question for me is, in terms of town approvals or whatever, whatever you need to do this, are you thinking that it would require a, just one zoning change of some sort?
So again, using the Norton approach as a model, just because I, we built in Norton for more than 10 years under this zoning, and it worked. It was incredibly simple and worked incredibly well. So I'm sure you're aware of the change the Governor Baker pushed through a couple of years ago, that a housing amendment at town meeting only requires a majority vote as opposed to a two-thirds vote at this point. It has to qualify from DHCD's point of view, but this would absolutely qualify. This is exactly what they're looking for. Either project would qualify. So with that in mind, we would need to work with the board to put together a warrant article to create the zoning amendment, that we create a, a senior housing, housing for the elderly, active adult, whatever you want to call it, bylaw. And the only reason I was suggesting the commercial zoning thing is that, given this location, depending on how the town feels about encouraging active adult in anywhere in town, this would be a way of restricting it, if you will. Doesn't mean you can't expand it to other zoning, of course you can, but as, if you wanted to try it out, see how it works, you know, that would be one way, and that's what Norton did. So they created, they modified their existing zoning articles, bylaws, by modifying their commercial zoning allowable use and added housing for the elderly as an allowable use in a commercial zone only. And I believe that's the way it still stands today, 20 years later. So that would, if that was an approach, then it would mean that there would be two warrant articles that would be required. One would be to rezone this property. We would draw a line somewhere here, because, you know, there's 25 acres that goes around. We would rezone, this, there would be a rezoning of this land to relate to all commercial zoning that's all around here. And then there'd be something that specified the rules associated with over 55.
Okay. Do you take questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Kathleen Mary, 34 Highlands Circle. As these are condos for ownership, would there be a covenant in, in agreement with the association management company that these need to be owner-occupied, or could someone come in and purchase the condominium, renting it out to an elderly person? So I guess my question is, what is your envision for owner occupancy versus a landlord property, investment property?
We're certainly open to that. I mean, we've built probably eight or 10 of these, and we've never actually done that, although I'm certainly aware of it being done. The threshold issue here, of course, is that, that they have to be owned, owner, owned by an individual or a family for that individual. You run into a decent number of situations, you know, with this age group in which someone might pass away, and the family doesn't necessarily want to sell the unit right then and there. And so, but I'm not opposed to what you're saying. I can tell you, having built well over 1,000 of these, I've never, we've never even heard of a problem with the occasional unit getting rented out. But that's something we deserve to discuss.
Mary?
Does your...
Mary?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary, you have these 98... I know, I was breaking her...
You know how to do this.
I know, I just forget. It's the least fun of the conversation. So the units you said are three-story.
Yes.
Are they three-story condominiums up and down, or is each one...
Each one has the same level, again, elevator and...
Elevators, okay.
Yes.
And will they be a one-bedroom, two-bedroom combination?
Some one-bedroom, mostly two-bedroom.
Mostly two.
Couple of three-bedrooms. But remember, they're age-restricted, so, you know, you must know, yeah. So if someone who wants a three-bedroom wants it because they're going to have people visiting, they're, they're adults, it's from the back, whatever the case may be.
And who would run, who would be the property manager?
Well, we would hire a professional property management company, which we do with all of our business. We are not in the management business, so it would be... And ultimately, once it's completed, of course, we turn it over to the homeowners. They, there's a condominium association award, the FSHDS, I'm sure you're familiar with it, and that award then can, would choose its own property manager. They very rarely stick with the property management company. Just the way they are.
Christopher Nowitz, 129 Circuits Street. You said the owners would be restricted to over 55?
Yes.
And no children under 18?
Correct.
But adult children would be allowed to live there?
Adult children are permitted to live? No. The, well, so, good question. Typically, the way this is set up is one owner occupant, please be over the age of 55. So if you have someone who's over the age of 55, they can own the building, and if they have an adult child who wants to live with them, a family member, they can. I will tell you that we see quite a few seniors who have disabled adult children who are still living with them. It's more common than you think. This is a very good housing type for a family that has that type of need. And so from time to time, we see that. So...
So my other question is to follow up. Some other cases, though, seen in some places like that, it's more police presence?
And because there's an adult living that's under 55 living with the...
Yeah, I'm just curious if you've seen cases like that. And then some, I know one place that they have put the restrictions, so you can only live there, or certainly at the time.
So...
If you're under 55.
So federal law is very clear on us, and we are not allowed to discriminate, because that's what's happening here, for, for anyone other than children under the age of 18 and seniors over 55. So if a senior has someone who wants to live with them, they can do that. Now, it's, it, the board can, although we would discourage it, you know, as a condition require that if there are two owner occupants, that they both be over the age of 55. My experience is that that doesn't really accomplish much. One of the things that we see quite a bit is young seniors. And what I mean by that is, you know, a lot of this has to do with when you start your families. You know, if you have your first kid and you're 22, 23, 24 years old, and maybe the husband is, is 30 and the wife is 25, or the other way around, or whatever the case may be, we see quite a bit where one family member has reached 55, and the other might only be 50, or 60 and 53. And those people are precluded for what seems to me no particularly good reason. But we can certainly get police records and look into other communities. One of the things that I should mention is, we, any questions you have of us, we will get answers and we will submit them to the boards and write, we're religious about. So we'll, we'll check into that.
Which board do you mean? To this board, you mean?
Well, I'm just saying that if we go forward with, with the proposal and questions like this come up, we will investigate, get the answers, and, and report back to whoever would...
I know, I didn't know if you meant to think some other organization. I just wasn't...
So will the property across the street have the amenities as the other two buildings?
We would, we would, if we built a pool, they would all be able to use that same pool. We're not going to build a separate.
Yeah, I just want to know.
Yeah.
Lloyd, I'm sure you've crunched the numbers, but the buildings have to be three stories to make it financially?
Yes, yes.
Got a question in the back there?
I have a question, too.
Did you just, maybe you just...
Oh, I'm sorry. Hunter Sullivan, B15 Lyden Lane.
Thank you.
I have a question about the building across the street.
Yes.
Is, you said that's going to be 30 units. Would those be two-bedroom apartments?
There would be a mix of ones, twos, and just a couple of threes. And, and we, we would obviously provide plans and show, but in general, the majority of the condominiums would be two-bedroom, with a few one-bedrooms and a couple of three-bedrooms.
And my second question is on the building across the street. Where would the parking be to that?
So here's Long Ponson Street here, right? And here's the building facing the street, the park machine behind the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the presentation? So I'm enthusiastic about it. I'll say that right up front, that I like the idea. I know that land's going to get developed eventually. It's just sitting there too long without being developed. So to make it fit in the character is really my biggest concern, and I don't know, two buildings in that one big there, area there is, is much better than the 200 units you had in there before. I just think, I think Lyden Lane is 130 units.
About 104 units, I think.
Okay. And the Housing Authority on the other side, I think 30 or so, or 40, something like that. So it seems to me to fit. I like the idea.
Yeah, 102.
I don't, I mean, over 55 restriction, I mean, you know, I'm on the fence about that. I don't really know that that is necessary, but it's probably a good idea. And it's also in the same area as the Mobile Home Park, so we do have already sort of that population in that area. And I, you know, and I agree that the location, nobody's going to walk from there to the Walmart, very rare, only because it's...
Well, we'd like to build a sidewalk.
Well, I think that's going to, we're going to have to do something, but getting across the intersection is, is really a hassle, and, and maybe on a nice Sunday morning they might, but it's not going to be general.
Yeah, yeah.
But knowing that age population, which I know all too well, they, they wouldn't mind that short drive. They would rather have that short drive than a, you know, that longer drive from some other place. So I don't know. I'm enthusiastic about it. Well, you'd like a short drive, wouldn't you? I think it's a great idea. I'd love to move forward with it, so I don't know what the rest of the board's thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we should shut it down.
Okay, that's what we were looking at.
Yeah, I definitely think it's worth kicking the tires on. You know, I like, I like this number better than the other number, you know? But yeah, definitely worth exploring.
I like, I like the two buildings better than the five. I also like the option of what you're saying about maybe putting the council on aging building there. That would be phenomenal area for that, center of town. And obviously, having, if you have all of them, they'd be very close, most of them.
So, excuse me. So John, just so you understand, the reason, well, one of the reasons that we're proposing active adult as opposed to non-age-restricted is that the septic requirements are less with a over 55 home as opposed to a non-age-restricted. So because of that 10,000 gallon restriction...
Yeah.
What frankly makes this work for us is that we can get those 72 units, the two 36-unit buildings. Turns out that a 36-unit building is a very, very efficient building. And if you look around on the website and look at apartment buildings all over the place, you're going to find that the vast majority of them are this size, because they just, they work well from a construction cost standpoint. Having said that, by pure chance, this, the 36-unit buildings, which gets you to 72, and 72 is the magic number at 150 gallons per unit, if we were doing it non-age-restricted, we would have to allocate 110 gallons per bedroom as opposed to 150 gallons per unit.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it.
No, but I just, just to explain something.
So I appreciate the explanation, but I, I think, I definitely would like to see, you know, kind of what it would look like and, and that, that type of thing. I really, I do, but I think it's a great idea.
And I know, Lloyd, a lot, the people I talked with about the proposal, your original proposal, one of the big concerns was our water. So I know it's early in the game with this second proposal, but do you have a ballpark rough estimate of the difference in water consumption that we can tell folks between your first proposal and this second?
It'll be dramatically less, yeah. And, and again, water consumption for senior houses is less than non-age-restricted for all the obvious reasons. You know, we take less showers, obviously. So, but yes, we can put that together.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So should we work with Cody?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. We're in a different place now than you were last fall, so we actually have people you can talk to.
Well, thank you for taking the time.
Absolutely. We appreciate the, the effort that you're taking to try to work with us. That's much appreciated.
Doesn't go unnoticed.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We'll be in touch soon.
All right. Thank you.
We'll wear ties next time.
Oh, don't even, don't even bother.
I don't.
It's so hard to know what to tell.
I don't. Don't worry about it.
You look sharp. Thank you, guys. Yes, appreciate it. Thanks.
Five-minute recess?
I guess we're going to do a five-minute recess as the vice chair. You can smell the, smell the violation.
71. 560.
Definitely.
But is it tied to like about 700 pounds? I think it's important that you want to put in a hole right now.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
We're going to look into that.
Right. And it's close to the mobile home. I don't know. It's, that'd be, that'd be nice. We could talk to that, some pickleball courts and.
Ooh, watch it. Pickleball's like a serious thing. It's like a serious thing.
We could, we could figure something out.
I've been, actually, when you brought that up, I was pickled. I just, I don't know why.
Sure. Oh, yeah. Well, things that are happening, not just here, but in the region.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're down. They've been dropping steadily the last two or three years. Elementary school is definitely down.
Okay, so we have on our three standing items, MBTA, Morse Brothers, and Training for Boards and Committees. Training for Boards and Committees, we really don't have anything to talk about yet. MBTA Action Plan.
I did submit a grant for technical assistance, so we should be there back in that next month or two.
Morse Brothers, we don't really have an update on it. We won't be going into executive session to discuss some things about it. But I guess we have much other than, I know they've started to take some stand out of there. That's what they tell us in executive session. Okay. Anything else that we need to do in public session? So I will make a motion to, oh, you know what? Before we do that, yeah, on, I should have picked up on this. On the Morse Brothers, so we did get an email from Steve Goodman. And it says, "The Morse Brothers project at the end of Lingan Street is continuing without permits. They are now storing manure on site in a Zone 2 area. Special permit required, but not applied for. The digging into the area known as the whaleback continues. There is continued earth removal without a permit. A cease and desist order from this board is warranted and lawful, and lawful. Inaction on this matter is unethical, at best of my opinion." Steve Goodman from Port Ave. So we'll take that into consideration. Okay. So we will, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21, and will not be returning to open session. The discussion will be pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, on the fire chief contract to conduct strategy session in regards to bargaining for contract negotiation with non-union personnel. Secondly, contract negotiations, firefighters, highway mixed-unit patrol officers and sergeant pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, as discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. And finally, Morse Brothers to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. And if we have a discussion in open meeting, it would have a detrimental effect on the position of the public body, as the chair I so declare pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3. Do we have a second?
Second.
All call vote, Mr. Nazarela?
Yes.
Mr. Sealy?
Yes.
And Mr. Bruno, will you vote yes?
We will not be coming back.
We will not be coming back. Everybody should clear the room.